Essays for the If I Were Mayor essay contest sponsored by Maryland Municipal League. These are two of my personal favorite essays, and this is, introduce yourself.
Abby Polling.
Abby Polling. Her mom is the outstanding principal of Emma K. Dowell Elementary School, award-winning, I should say. And we're really proud and pleased to have her with us here tonight. I was just at Emma K. Dowell earlier today with fifth graders there, and really happy to see all the great work that's going on there, so thank you. So, if we're ready, are we ready, tech crew? This is the main for TV. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Calling us to order is Daniel Kim. Daniel in the gavel. This meeting is now called to order.
The meeting is now called to order.
Excellent. The first thing on our agenda is the invocation by Councilmember Nye, and following that, Kenna will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. So please stand as you are able.
My guest tonight is Reverend Vicki Wagner, who will be giving the prayer.
She and her hu- she and her husband have been very supportive of Hagerstown. They have helped with numerous events in the city. They are also very good friends of mine as well. Vicki?
Would you bow your heads while I pray? Dearest Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all that are assembled here today. Thank you for life, love, friendship, useful work, and sufficient help to complete that work. Thank you also for guiding our lives so that each of us can recognize our individual callings and embrace the opportunity to serve others. The scriptures have told us to obey the governing authorities because they bring peace, order, and justice to our lives. Therefore, Father, I pray for your blessing upon this mayor and council and other city officials gathered here tonight. Please give them wisdom to govern, a sense of justice, confidence to know the decisions that promote the welfare and needs of our citizens, strength to work together even through opposing views, peace and joy in their personal lives so that their tasks might be easier. I pray for the agenda and place for them tonight, and ask that you direct them on a course that will benefit all those who live, work, in and near the city of Hagerstown. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. United States of America, and to a republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, and let's give a round of applause again to our students here. Daniel Kim and Kenna Ruark, my winners of the If I Were Mayor essay contest. I think we also had a statewide winner from Emma K. Dowell as well. Is that Joseph?
Emma Lavasser.
Emma Lavasser, sorry. And so we want to congratulate her and also Abby for being here with us tonight. So, once again, thanks a lot. Good job, guys. You can have a seat now in the audience. Hopefully you stick around for all the fun. Again, can't say enough about all the outstanding work being done at Emma K. Dowell Elementary School. So thank you, Principal Polling and Ms. Wolf, for all the good work, and all the rest of your colleagues there, for all the good work you're doing at Emma K. Dowell. I also wanted to recognize, we have a Boy Scout with us here tonight, Sean McGuire from Troop 103, is that right? Sean, you want to stand up and be recognized? Thank you for being here.
Thank you. And just want to make a few announcements. Of course, we're operating under the rules of procedure adopted on September 24th, 2013. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted, and all correspondence for distribution to elected officials should provide, should be provided to our city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Meeting schedule, next month we'll have four meetings. On May 5th, we have our work session at 4:00. I would like to mention that Superintendent Wilcox will be coming to that meeting to give us an update on the academic hub, as he was directed to do by the Board of Education's resolution from last week. Tuesday, May 12th, we have a work session at 4:00 PM, and our tax rate and budget hearings will be at 7:00 PM on the 12th. Tuesday, May 19th, we have a work session at 4:00 PM, and Tuesday, May 26th, a regular session at 7:00 PM. We do have some guests with us here tonight as well for Building Safety Month, is that right? Yes? Okay. Please come on up.
Greetings. How are you? Tell us who you are and-
Blaine Bowen, Chief Code Official for the City of Hagerstown.
And Blaine, we're so grateful for your service to the city, and this is a proclamation on Building Safety Month, May 2015. Whereas the city prioritizes safety as utmost importance in existing and newly built structures and environments occupied by those who live, work, and play, worship, and visit our community, and whereas through the dedication of building officials, fire prevention officials, licensed design professionals, licensed tradespeople, developers, building owners, and property managers who design, construct, inspect, and maintain the architecturally unique and diverse properties within our corporate limits, and whereas these partners, who as members of the International Code Council, implement the codes of this state that protect our citizenry to include the international codes, and whereas the international codes, as the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation, are used by most US cities, counties, and states, these modern building codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, and tornadoes, and whereas Building Safety Month is a time for everyone to be aware of the importance of safe buildings and building systems, fire prevention, electrical safety, and pool safety, and whereas Building Safety Month is observed to recognize that lives have been saved through the implementation of codes, and upholding these codes is critical to assuring safe and livable buildings. Now therefore, I, David Geisberg, the mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2015 as Building Safety Month, and encourage our citizens to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided by local state building departments and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. So Blaine, thank you very much for all the work on behalf of all of the team that works for the city and keeping us safe. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before we get into citizen comments, could I just make just an observation, please?
Yes, sir.
I too would like to thank the Wagner's for being here this evening. I know Vicki and her husband have put hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of hours, volunteer time into the city of Hagerstown, and they've helped make the city of Hagerstown a better place than it would have been without them. And we appreciate that. Also, I want to tell you that that was a great prayer. I'll listen to every word of it. You write a much better prayer than I do, and the next time I need a prayer, you're going to be my ghostwriter. But we're proud, as Penny said, we're proud to have you here this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have citizen comments up next. I have the list here.
It's Mary, and then Mary.
Mary, you are the person on the list, so this is part three of your installment, right?
Yes, and I'll be back next year. It's an election year, and I might get a little more productive results. Tonight, I want to talk about the names. I've pretty much given up trying on anything else, but I'm headed for those people on YouTube who might be interested in their ancestors, and I'll repeat that we have genealogical records at the Miller House, and we've got them at the library, and in between those two institutions, there is the Potomac Beat Shop, which has just consolidated three shops into one, and it's even better than it was before. You want to come down and look at it. I'm going to start out with the name of Susan Dickens, an insane girl aged 25 from Hancock, who was, unfortunately died at the Washington County Alms House on the evening of November 30th, 1867. Also, there was a Samuel Huffman of the same institution. He died of consumption on December 4th of 1867. And this may seem a bit morbid, but they only made the paper because they died. So we have Samuel Lyday, or Lyday, L-Y-D-A-Y, who participated in the Battle of Lundie's Lane, which was under General Winfield Scott near Niagara. He paid to live in the Alms House until he died there. As did Michael Meisel, who was born in the Kingdom of Bavaria on February 22nd, 1790, and died at the Alms House on the 1st of March at the advanced age of 79 years and eight days. He was a soldier under Napoleon Bonaparte during his memorable campaign against Russia when the city of Moscow was burned. He lived in Keedysville until the death of his wife, and then he too spent two years at his own expense in the Alms House where he died. Which brings me to the cemetery that the Alms House then became in 1862. Quoting from the paper I have in front of me, "Location of soldiers' bodies already buried in 1862 on the Alms House grounds is not known." So, to go on from there, I'd like to start reading about these soldiers. During a given week, just after the battle, government hands, one supposes Union, since they were Union soldiers, have engaged in removing the remains of Union soldiers from the burying grounds near the Washington County Alms House to the Antietam Cemetery. The Confederates went to Rose Hill, but not necessarily at this time. The Alms House list. Lieutenant Christian, West Virginia. W.H. Non, Company B, 20th North Carolina. E.H. Count, Column 1, 14th North Carolina. George Snither, Company G, 14th North Carolina. Five unknown. Lieutenant J. Elliott, 1st North Carolina, July 28th, '63. That would have been Gettysburg, so I won't keep repeating that. J.W. Wilson, 5th North Carolina. W.H. Dunn, 10th Alabama. Franklin Cunningham, 31st West Virginia. J.D. Gray, 37th Virginia. H. Ral, Company E, 14th Alabama. F.M. Conaway, Company H, 13th Alabama. H. Watkins, Ashby's Cavalry, Virginia. T.B. Giaco, 19th Mississippi. A.M. Pigasian, Company H, 6th North Carolina. S.B. York, Company A, 2nd North Carolina. John Reese, 5th Virginia. I've got to go back and correct myself. This list is the Confederate dead. The other is on the other sheet. I'll get to them in a minute. These are the Confederate dead, so sorry. Okay. S.B. York, Company A, 2nd North Carolina. John Reese, 5th Virginia. Sergeant John McDowell, 55th North Carolina. I.B. Edwards, A.B. Nevelin, 13th Virginia. Lynch died September, oh, that's Gettysburg. Alexandria Coon, Company B, 5th Virginia. Lieutenant J.B. O'Neill, Company F, 3rd South Carolina. J.D. Smith of Tennessee. R.I. Little, Company E, 13th North Carolina. F.R. Gregory, Mississippi. William Piercy, North Carolina. Nine unknown. Now, for what I have, hopefully this time I'm going to be correct, that it's the Union. J.B. Snow, Company D, 137th Regular Pennsylvania. William King, Company A, 133rd Pennsylvania. Yes, this is the Union. Jesse Jones, Company H, 3rd Wisconsin. Isaac Dobson, Company D, 8th New York Cavalry. James Glass, 3rd New York Battery. Washington L. Taylor, 43rd New York. W. Braithwaite, Company E, 5th Wisconsin. A.B. Brown, Company J, 37th Mass. Jason V. F., sorry, Browse, Company F, 5th Maine. Jacob Rilton, Company B, 20th New York. James Hathaway, Company K, 137th Pennsylvania. James, Jacob Berkman, 3rd New Jersey. H.E. Black, Slack. H.E. Slack, Company B, 4th Vermont. Greer, Company C, 18th New York. Arleers, Company E, 27th New York. William H. Craig, Company D, 17th Mass. Robert Sanford, 32 New York. John Kirkpatrick, Company D, 137th Pennsylvania. George C. Mirth, Company B, 18th New York. John Patterson, Company J, 97th New York. G.S. Cot, Company B, 6th Vermont. William Davidson, Company D, 137th. John H. Hunt, Company E, 2nd Rhode Island. David Davidson, Company something L, 6th Vermont. George G. Hale, George C. Hale, Company G, 37th New York. Rufus Wright, Company E, 16th New York. George Ebwood, Company D, 26th New Jersey. Dennis Campbell, Company D, 49th Pennsylvania.
Mayor, I have to tell you, five minutes.
I've only got four names.
Okay. Say those four.
S.E. Rowley, Company H, 47th New York. Conrad Schnell, Company K, 1st New Jersey. Chester Bath, Company A, 5th Wisconsin. William Richardson, Company A, 27th New York. The last list was Union. First list was Confederate. And I will leave with an answer to the question of what I want, is if you can't come up with somebody who will investigate, do an archaeological exploration, exploration of that site, then please just leave it the way it is, because it is a cemetery, and it's a historical, sociological, and could even be economic gem. Thank you.
Next, Mayor, citizen administrator, city administrator comments. I'll get it right one of these times.
Not for me.
No. I'll start here at my right. We'll go in alphabetical order. Mr. Alshire.
I didn't sign up for it.
I'm sorry, I did not. Did anyone not sign up that wished to speak? Okay. Thanks.
I saw more people than usual. The first comment is in response to the article regarding the academic hub. It seems like we're going to get an update on that issue. It is unfortunate, I'm sure we've all been in this position where you talk for half an hour with, you know, with a media outlet, and you get about 10 seconds of that coverage included, and the notion that this body is out of the loop on that process, I think, is well out of context of truth. I think we've had several discussions about it. I think if any part of it, we may be out of the loop on, is sort of who the final partners will be and what the final price is, and timeframe, because there's all kinds of moving parts on that issue, and as everybody knows, fortunately or unfortunately, government just simply doesn't move at the pace that some in the private sector would expect. The second is, you also probably read an article about the relocation efforts of a specific nonprofit from downtown, you know, and again, what you read is but a snippet of the larger story. If I'm not mistaken, this body received at least one email communication from staff a month or so ago, that that entity was, without any approval, without the proper permits, turning some of their previously used office space into living quarters. And, you know, I don't think that was acceptable, and I'd be curious if that had anything to do with the proposed plans now for relocation. The third item is another snippet from local media outlets in the past two weeks, and I think are a bit reflective of other issues that are going on, you know, a bit closer to home and across the country, and, you know, I think one of the first headlines on the issue associated with the TASER incident, a week or two ago, was the use of the term "shot" and "gun" in headlines for a device that is not a firearm and is an instrument that's deployed in an effort. And I thank both the police department for their professional conduct of that specific event, and I also thank the residents for their very professional comments reflective of your appropriate handling of the situation and protecting their livelihood. And then the last is, I know there were some comments made earlier about the departure of the head of our economic development, and I would simply say, I think I was on the board when John came in, and I would wish him well in his new position in DC.
Mr. Reebaker.
Yes, as I said last week, and it occurred, we met with the MML Legislative Committee, met with Governor Hogan and Budget Secretary Brinkley and Transportation Secretary Rahm last week, and had a give and take with the governor about various issues, and especially the need for long-term guarantees and strategy funding for highway user revenues, and the need for bills introduced with all good intentions in the General Assembly that affect us without any recourse for the financial loss that we take, and he thought that there could be some backfilling on issues like that, that at the state, they consider statewide issues that affect us greatly. There's a number of those. It was an interesting conversation, and the secretary stayed longer. We discussed budget process with Secretary Brinkley, and had some interesting new takes on highway strategy with Secretary Rahm. He says he's going to try to decentralize and move approval of local items like new curb cuts or proposals for modifications along state highways to the local offices. We'll see how that works out. He said an amazing statistic, that it can take State Highway Department two years from initiating work on a contract to actually awarding the contract. It's, wow. And discussed ways to bring that down, and so I think there was a good give and take trying to understand each other's positions in that meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Munson.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Munson.
I have a couple of items.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Last week, I mentioned the Bowman Development Project on Antietam Street, the tearing down of the building there. Every day I go past, it gets lower and lower, and it's never looked better, Mayor. Not in my memory. The project's coming along fine, and my guess is it'll be finished by the end of this week or next week, and it really is going to be a nice, I'd say addition, that's the wrong word, to the city when it's complete. That was a real slum, that building. Also, I, along with the mayor, who did his usual great job of being the emcee, attended the Community Gardens Ceremony on Saturday morning, and the mayor brought along with him a guest, State Senator Jim Rosa Pepp from the University of Maryland region, and it was a wonderful ceremony. We had a good time. People were happy, there were lots of kids, there were a lot of people planning. It was a, it was a bit of a cold morning, but it was essentially a nice day. I think it's one of the things that we really did right on this council, and it's amazing, we did this back, I think we passed the ordinance back in January, and here it is, April, and it's already underway. It's nice to see government work so fast sometime, Mayor. Also, I'd just like to point out that the building across the street, North Potomac, from the Elizabeth Hager Center, I think it's 16 or 18 North Potomac, is being scraped and painted as we talk tonight, or at least it was today. It won't be long before that building, the facade, the front of the building is repainted, and if you look up and down this whole block now, every, every building on this whole block looks really good. I think that's something to be proud of, and it's a, it's a little bit of a sign of success. And finally, I, with regard to the hub project, which I think Kristen brought up, I think it's a great project, and we really need to, and I'm sure I'm speaking for most people in this council, we really need to find some way to make that happen. It's going to bring more vibrancy to downtown Hagerstown, as well as lots of visitors, and when Jim Rosa Pepp was here last Saturday morning, he took a tour, no, it was on Friday, he took a tour of the School for the Arts, and he was mightily impressed with what he saw here. That fact can't do anything but help us in Annapolis someday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Nye.
Did you take him to the play?
He couldn't stay that long. No, he had to get back.
All right. Just an update on what I brought up last week, the urns that were stolen. There were three homes last week, there's now a fourth, and these are antique urns. They do have a description of the individual and another individual that's evidently driving. That's two now for the south end that has been hit, one for the east end and one for the north end. Also, the graffiti is starting now to show up, so I would say that in your neighborhood, if you have alleys, I would certainly go down the alleys to see whether or not any of the garages have been tagged. And also, I got a phone call this morning that under, I don't know, foreclosures, bankruptcies, but the professional arts building is now going to be on the block. And that's not a good thing, because that is a huge, huge building, and somebody could really play havoc with that whole block, so we really have to keep a close watch on what's going on there. Also, Tim Thompson and myself and Bruce and the mayor met about the veterans banners, and as of now, we continue to go forward with it, hoping everything will fall in place, and perhaps, maybe, by May 30th, we may see them hanging. It just all depends, but everything is getting ironed out. So it was a very productive meeting, and I did want to pass that along to any of the veterans that are watching, because I know that there are some that were interested in that. Also, we had budget tonight at 4:00, and I have to feel that I need to make these statements that I could not make there, that they at least go on the record, because probably I'm going to end up losing a piece of paper. So bear with me. I wrote these thoughts down so that I wouldn't forget them. I would like to recommend that we do not fill this position that was vacant as of May 15th. I feel it would be prudent and in best interest of our budget to eliminate this position. Right off the bat, we would save one and a half months of salary between the 15th of May and the end of our fiscal year in July. Next year, even more savings. I believe that we should revert back to the structure that was in place before the position was created. There are capable individuals within these departments that were department managers for years before the reorganization that created this additional layer of upper management. We could combine Community Development and Economic Development, Code and Planning, and Community Affairs and Communications. There would only be three department managers to report to the city manager, and still we, and still would keep a balance of power in place. It is up to the mayor and council to create the structure of these departments. Once the new administrator comes on board, she can make recommendations to us for any changes that deem necessary, but it would be good for us, us to hand over a workable plan for the functioning of our city. That's it.
Could I pick up on one thing she said? She mentioned, Penny mentioned the stealing of the urns, and she raised that for really good reason. This is a serious matter. The people on the right of me, where I live, had their urns stolen. The people on the left of me, where I live, had their urns stolen. I don't have any urns, so I didn't have mine stolen. But some of these urns that were stolen, as Penny pointed out, were antique urns, were three to five hundred-
three to $500. Even some of them were bolted down, and they broke them off to, to steal them. So if anybody has urns out there, if anybody knows of anybody that has urns, you better have them put in a, in a house or in a basement or someplace for a while, because obviously these thieves mean to get them. And hopefully, as Penny's pointed out, they're going to be caught in, in a not-too-distant future. There is some, some thought that they may be selling these urns on, on, on the internet. So Chief, I see you're out there. I know you're involved, thank you.
Thanks. I have a lot of comments, so please bear with me. I think they're all important. And I want to address the report on the Academic Hub as well, and the editorial that was published this past Sunday. First, I want to thank the President of the Board of Education, Donna Brightman. She has been in constant contact with me ever since she became the President of the Board of Ed. Prior to her, I had very regular contact with the President of the Board, Justin Hardings. So there is no disconnect when it comes to the communication between the city and the Board of Education as to where their, their project is. It is important to inject some facts into the equation here. First, and I don't want to speak for anyone on this council, but I am pretty confident there is a majority who believe this proposed project is a responsible investment of public money. In fact, last year, the city administrator included in his budget a one and a half million dollar allocation for what was called a downtown project, because at that point it did not have a name. Currently, this year's budget also includes $1.5 million for a downtown project. It is my understanding, I think it is the understanding of council members, that this allocation has been for the Academic Hub.
It's not my understanding, it's for downtown redevelopment.
But one of the options for that allocation was for this particular project.
That's where the million and a half came from.
Right. The, the other point about that is that this mayor and council believes that education is a priority, and for economic development, it is even more of a priority. And let's get one thing straight, if and when the city makes a contribution to this project, city taxpayers will be paying twice, because not only do we pay city taxes, we pay county taxes that will be going to fund this project as well. So the city has stepped up to the plate. I think the county commissioner should be taking the lead on this project. It is their responsibility to fund schools, and I believe that they should take a leadership role in, in promoting this project. Not to mention the fact that their $4 million investment may save them $40 million in the long run by delaying for a long time, if not forever, the need for a third high school, which will cost 80 to 90 million dollars. So that in itself is just a good investment of public money. You know, my council member colleague here has pointed out several times that we're probably the only municipality in the state who's ever contributed to a library project. And we did that because, again, education is a priority in addition to downtown revitalization. The same holds true for this particular project. The other important point to make is that, you know, because of the ignorant and irresponsible comments of one Board of Education member, I believe that our local newspaper did try to get reactions from this council. I'm sorry I was not able to call the reporter back in time for the deadline, because I, I would have liked to have pointed out the partnership that has existed between the Board of Education and myself as the mayor in this council. So again, I think that we can find a way forward to make this project happen. I want the city to step up and, and support this project. Of course, we are in the midst of our budget discussions, and next week we will have the superintendent here next week to present the project as it currently exists. Everybody on the council will be receiving a copy of the resolution that they passed, but I certainly do not think it's good government to, to govern through the media. So I'm glad that they'll be coming to the table and can update us on that project. But again, if we're serious about economic development in our community, then we should be looking at this Academic Hub as a serious project worthy of public investment, because the bottom line is if we're not willing to invest in ourselves as a community, we can't expect other people to come in here and, from the private sector and invest in us. So that's my little soapbox on that particular issue. But there were so many good things happening in the city of Hagerstown, I just wanted to tick off some of the things that, that we've had happen here in Hagerstown. First of all, the Main Street launch last Wednesday was a huge success. We had over 100 people attend and get engaged, and it was really, really a great turnout, and I want to thank staff and all the volunteers who made that happen. The, on Thursday night, the city, I know, and the state and the county partnered to present a Financial Benefits of Historic Preservation presentation. I thought that was, for a Thursday night, on that topic, was pretty well attended. I think I counted about 34 people there. So I want to thank them for putting that on. I do think that it's important to get the message out there about some of the benefits of investing in historic properties. Let's see, Saturday was a busy day, as Councilmember Munson mentioned. We had a guest come, and I was grateful for his interest. I did not ask him to come, he wanted to come to Hagerstown and see all the great things that are happening here, so I was glad he could tag along. The first thing we did was go to the United Way Born Learning Event at the USMH Plaza on Saturday morning. It was cold, I even heard there was some snow earlier in the morning, but yet people showed up, once again, to show how committed we are to early education. The community gardening opening was really special. A lot of people there, it was really nice to see the principal of Besser Elementary there, one of the assistant principals, and a lot of the kids. They have a plot at the community garden and are really already invested in that project, and it's really wonderful to see. So I want to thank all of the staff, the task force, the volunteers, and the sponsors who made that project possible, and it's only gonna get better. Also on that day, we celebrated Arbor Day, and can't remember her name, from the Forest Service came and presented the city of Hagerstown with this lovely award, the Tree City USA Award, and we are now a 30-year recipient of this award. So for 30 years now, the city of Hagerstown's commitment to being a tree city is being recognized, so congratulations, city of Hagerstown, on their, our 30th year of being a Tree City USA. Also on Saturday was the Friends of the Library Quarter Auction, very heavily attended, I'm sure it was a success, and they really missed having Councilmember Alshire's homemade-
I sent my apologies.
-homemade goods there for the auction. But maybe they'll be able to enjoy them next year. And then today, of course, the Workers Memorial Day, I want to thank the AFL-CIO and the Central Labor, or Central Maryland Labor Council for putting on that event every year. I'm glad I could attend it this year and represent the city of Hagerstown and the council for that memorial event. And last but not least, I'm very pleased and proud that we have announced our new city administrator, Valerie Means, who will be starting in June. Of course, she will be the first female city administrator and executive here at the, the city, and I'm very proud that the council was very professional throughout the process. We had a, a wonderful headhunter, a consultant who helped us manage that process, and it was a very worthwhile investment from my point of view. The process was very smooth, it was fair, it was a really good process, and I, I just can't say enough about how proud I am of the council, and I'm very pleased with our decision. Valerie's got a strong background in finance, which is, of course, one of the most important jobs of the city administrator, presenting a budget every year to the council. She has private sector experience, which makes her a better public servant, and I think that came across in her interview. Being where she's from, she knows what it's like to be within a stone's throw of two different states, or three different states, and I think that will serve her well in her capacity here in Hagerstown. Pardon me, she has a lot of experience with diverse groups of stakeholders and building relationships with people in the community, including with unions, and I think that experience will also serve her well. And basically, like she said, I believe she's got the head, heart, and guts to do a really great job, so I am looking forward to working with her, although we'll be sad to see Bruce go. This is an exciting time in the city of Hagerstown, it's a time of change, and it's a change that I think we all need to embrace and be a part of. So once again, I want to thank my fellow council members for a really professional and a good process in that, in that hiring. With that, any other comments? With that, we'll go to the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the approval of minutes of the mayor and council meeting settled on March 10, 17, and 30, for our stall 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzenner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, thank, thank our clerk. As you've just pointed out, we've been pretty busy over the last few weeks, meeting practically around the clock one week to get a new city administrator, and she was in every one, our clerk has been in every one of those meetings, but yet she spent the time and energy to get the meeting minutes almost caught up, and I think that's, that's great of her. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Minutes are approved. Onto the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzenner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, the consent agenda is approved. Unfinished business, item A is the approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 33 of the Code of Ethics.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and council to approve an ordinance to amend Chapter 33 Code of Ethics of the City Code to amend the time period for post-employment limitations and restrictions on elected officials and to clarify the prohibition and disclosure requirements regarding gifts.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzenner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Item B, amendments to Article 10.
hereby move the mayor and city council adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 10 Administration of Government, Part II, Section 1022B, Code of City of Hagerstown. This code amendment will revise the definition of quorum for meetings of boards, commissions, and authorities from two-thirds majority to a majority of the appointed members.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzenner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Under new business, item A is the introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 117 Recycling and Refuse Collection, establishing a fee for abatement of violations and clarifying code language.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and city council to introduce an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Hagerstown, Chapter 117 Recycling and Refuse. Specifically, the amendments will, number one, establish the imposition of an abatement, the abatement fee for removing trash set out on the incorrect day. Number two, clarify enforcement language indicating who may be charged and the fined amount. This amendment aligns this chapter with the city's property maintenance code.
Motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Metzenner. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the ordinance is introduced. Item B is the introduction of an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 278 South Prospect Street for the city's homeownership program.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and city council to introduce an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property located at 278 South Potomac Street for the city's homeownership plan. The acquisition of 278 South Prospect Street is consistent with the community's city center plan, catalytic, catalytic project number eight, the city's housing and neighborhoods vision, and the 2015 goals and priorities established by the mayor and city council. The proposed purchase price is $72,000 and would be funded with state community legacy grant funds.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, the ordinance is introduced. Item C is the approval of an exemption from Chapter 155 Noise for a special event at the Hagerstown Church of the Brethren.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of an exemption from the City Code, Chapter 155 Noise. This extent, this exemption is being granted in accordance with Section 155-5M2, the Hagerstown Church of the Brethren, 15 South Mulberry Street, Hagerstown, for an event on Saturday, May the 30th, 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
I have a question, I'm not, I'm always in a booth, but what, what's the duration and type of noise?
Two to four p.m.
Yeah.
And a live band concert.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Approval is granted. Item D is the approval of a budget transfer to citywide down payment rehab program.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move from there and city council to authorize a budget transfer of $30,000 from the city center residency down payment rehabilitation program budget for allocation to the citywide down payment rehabilitation program. This FY15 budget transfer will fund up to four additional citywide down payment rehabilitation projects. Funding will remain available in the city center residency program budget to fund up to five city center residency down payment rehabilitation cases.
Motion made by Mr. Alshar, seconded by Mr. Metzenner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The approval is granted. Item E, the approval of rain insurance policy for the 2015 Western Maryland Blues Fest.
May everybody move for approval to purchase rain insurance policies for the 2015 Western Maryland Blues Fest, the following maximum amounts. A $20,000 policy for Friday, May 29th, 2015, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and a $60,000 policy for Saturday, May 30th, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Total cost for the insurance will be $9,200. Funding would be from the Blues Fest budget in the Public Functions account. 5% of the rain insurance proceeds would go to the Maryland Theater for their risk of the beer and wine sales.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Approval is granted. Item F, the approval of city funding support for Hagerstown BMX.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and council approval of $5,000 in city funding support for the Hagerstown BMX. This funding will be provided as a one-for-one match to the BMX private fundraising to support the facility and the children who use it. The source of the city's funding will be from the approved FY15 general fund budget.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzenner, seconded by Mr. Alshar. Any discussion?
Yes, I, I support this last-minute request because it's a match, because the testimony is that it brings in revenues from outside the area, and that it's a match leveraging our money.
I would also note that they did go out, as requested by the council, and get money from the CVB, which is good for them. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, funding is approved. Last but not least, the approval of Hagerstown Police Department Continuity of Operations Plan Consultant Services, Smith &amp; Planning Design LLC.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council authorization for the Hagerstown Police Department to utilize the services of Smith Planning and Design LLC to develop a continuity of operations plan for the department that costs $12,760. This plan will allow the Hagerstown Police Department to continue daily operations and essential functions in the case of natural angle or man-made disasters. The primary goal of the continuity of operations plan is to restore essential functions in an altered site location within 12 to 24 hours after activation. Funding for the project will be provided through the police department's current operating budget for fiscal year 15.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzenner, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Motion- Motion carries, four to one. With that, we will be adjourned. Thank you all very much.
It's been a pleasure.